Yeah, I got a new show for y'all.
Got a damn good show.
Last week, we talked about the school board meeting up there in Dearborn, Michigan. The Muslims shut it down.
Yeah. They shut it down. We taking our country back. Who thought Muslims would help? That's what I call progress, man.
Yeah, but anyway, uh.
These guys are funny, right? These guys are funny. It definitely helps you when you have like a entertaining aspect to your, especially as a conservative and you're black, you are, if you got some kind of entertainment value, entertainment value, uh, it's gonna work for you. I'm not knocking them for that.
You're a huge milking pot of all different kinds of races.
Yeah.
Religions, freedom, yeah, coaches. That's why we call this place America.
Yeah, the reason why Dearborn, Michigan has such a high population of Muslims is because the Democrats had a game plan. We gonna change the demographics of this country.
Yeah, and now that's the biggest step up in Michigan, that's the biggest population of Muslims in North America.
The Muslim capital of the United States.
Dearborn, Michigan.
That was by design by the Democrats.
Yeah.
Cause he was thinking that this state was gonna go fully blue.
Yeah.
With the Muslims, but it backfired on them.
Yeah.
Muslims are far right.
Look, if I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna say I agree with them or disagree with them. All I'm gonna say is, when you really look at it, a lot of these people coming from different countries and stuff like that, usually, especially if they're religious, like Muslim or um, Christian, or if they come from like African countries and stuff like that, they tend to be pretty conservative. They, they tend to be like not for abortion. They tend to be um, more so of like, they like capitalism. Like, they come here because they wanna make a lot of money. They, they believe in the individual and being able to prosper. Like, uh, you would think that, you know, Democrats would know that.
Far right. They are actually. Anybody that's a true Muslim, they are far right. They didn't fell off the cliff, right?
Yeah.
But anyway, so I'm gonna show you some tapes from the, some video from the event. And man, let me tell you firsthand, this was the craziest school board meeting I've probably ever seen.
Oh, these Muslims, they ain't playing.
Oh, they ain't playing.
They ain't playing, man.
They ain't playing.
They, 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 they taking their country back.
First, I'm gonna show y'all from the uh, the first few uh, videos I'm gonna show you is of straight people.
Yeah.
And the Muslims.
Yeah.
You're gonna find that their arguments are logical.
Yeah, very rational too. Makes sense.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say it's full of hate, hatred or bigotry. It's just common sense.
Yeah.
Alright, I've always been against this idea of like, before you play a video by prepping your audience to what they expect, I've always been a fan of like, let your audience decide for themselves if they think that the arguments that they're about to hear is logical or illogical. I, I just, I prefer that because sometimes you can skew how people see something based on what you tell them. And I see a lot of liberals do this, like um, liberals will say, oh, these guys are bigots, these guys are homophobic or whatever. Then they say, play the clip. So you already, you already walking in with an expectation. So you're gonna see it through that lens. I, I, I'm not necessarily saying that they shouldn't have witnessed right, but I personally think it's more effective to let people decide for themselves without you prepping them ahead of time.
Check it out.
And every parent has a right to object to the things their kids are being exposed to, but there is a breaking point. And the breaking point is this, the fundamental existence of school is not to learn about sexual pleasure, to not to learn about new sex acts. The fundamental purpose of school is to prepare our kids to be successful adults who can go off and have careers. And it's up to every parent.
Woo, preach.
To then teach their kids morality. It is out of the place of the school to do it, and I reject any notion that parents here are filled with hate or bigotry. The parents don't want their kids sexualized.
She don't understand though. That's the argument that they have against you. That's the, that's the best way to beat you, to call you a bunch of names, to, to, to dehumanize you, to make you feel as if you're just hateful. But maybe you just love your children and you wanna have a say in what they're exposed to. It's that simple. This used to be common sense. We used to just be able to accept that at face value, but now we have to defend that.
If other people wanna sexualize their kids, that's their business.
Now, I don't know what you guys are trying to do. I don't know. Why didn't you take these books out and say, that's it, we're done with these books? But you guys wanna sit here and just keep the books, you know, instead of you guys taking the six books out, we wouldn't even be here. What's the problem? What's the agenda? What are you getting out of it? It's getting ridiculous. People got kids out here, okay? I'm not against the gay. I'm not against anything. I'm against the books. Okay? Don't sit here and say that people are sitting here coming to you guys and just telling you, oh, we want these books out.
These people fired up, fired up.
Worried about the gay people? No problem. We're not worried about the gay people. Worried about our children.
Facts.
Okay, and second of all.
Look, look, the man is making a, a, a very simple argument. You're an adult. You get to choose how you live your life. Live your life how you see fit. Just don't force my kids to be a part of it. Don't force my kids to have to accept your ideology or to accept what you're trying to push. School is about math, science, history, learning of how to grow up and be a productive citizen in society and getting the tools that'll help you with that. Like it or not, heterosexuals, homosexuals, and anything in between are sexual preferences. Kids in elementary and middle school, for the most part, shouldn't be learning about sexual preferences. You can understand that these people exist, that they are heterosexual people, homosexual people, but to try to teach people what it means to be those things and how to embrace it or whatever the case may be, or whatever they teaching, to me, that goes a little too far. And I would say the same thing with heterosexuals. I don't want my children uh, in middle school or elementary school being given books about how heterosexual relationships work and all of that stuff. It's just like, you know, we don't want that.
I don't wanna hear anybody, okay, saying they're saying, oh, you guys are offending the, the gay. These are kids. They can be eighteen. They be, if they wanna become gay, let them become gay. Who cares? It's not our problem.
I see the Muslim back there was like, nah, I agree with that dog. Muslim like, I was with you until you said that, man. Like, I don't know about that dog.
We don't want kids to have access to these books. It's nice and simple. I'm not gonna address the situation no more. It is, it is what it is. And the only person that's behind this is Rashida Tlaib. Do not vote for Rashida Tlaib. It's nice and simple.
Preach. I'm done.
That at the core of this issue is an ideological battle. And it seems like, and I hope I'm mistaken in my assessment.
Oh my god.
That some members of this board have inclined towards an insane liberal LGBT ideology that holds many fanatical views, but non-so deranged as the idea that [BLEEP] is good and students should have access to [BLEEP] material in school as part of education.
Is the books showing actual like, the engagement of sexual activity? It is, I'm not familiar with the book situation. Like, I don't know what's in the book or whatever the case may be, but it seem like these parents are pissed off.
The reality is, the proponents of LGBT liberal ideology here and elsewhere are fine with democracy as long as people vote for their fanatical views. And as long as it supports their wicked agendas. If people vote against their views, the liberal authority blocks the democratic process and imposes the LGBT liberal positions on the populace. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of, Members of the Board of Education, if democracy matters, we are the majority here in Dearborn. Let us draw the boundaries on appropriateness.
Yes. Woo, them boys on fire, boy. Let me tell you, man, that's American right now. I don't care if you Muslim, Christian, atheist, when you stand for American values and democracy and being able to choose how you raise your kids and allowing yourself to have a say in these matters, that's democracy. That's, that's, that's America. That's America, baby. You can't get no better than that.
See, see how rational and logical?
Yeah.
And their views come from the reality that sexuality is actually taught.
Yeah.
It's a social construct, really. Yeah, there is why I'm straight.
My gosh.
Because I wasn't raised by homosexuals.
Yeah.
Both my parents were straight. I had both my parents in my life.
Yeah, I don't care how straight you think you are. If you're growing up around two gay men and they're your parents or two gay women.
I mean, look at Madonna. Look at all these celebrities adopting kids. All their kids are gay and transgender. Your sexuality is taught. That's why everybody's straight.
Alright, so, I don't agree a hundred percent, right? There are some people who are just gay. Like, bro, I grew up in the hood and every, for the most part, everybody was heterosexual. And I knew some gay dudes who parents were heterosexual. They grew around nothing but heterosexual dudes and they were just gay. Them, them dudes came out gay. I see, like, you know, you could do to stop them guys from being gay. Them boys like other boys. And no matter how much you try, them boys, they like women. Now, I, make of that how you will, but some, some people just gay. Now, can some people behave in homosexual activity due to their environment? Of course they can. You see dudes in prison do it all the time. And as far as the transgender situation go, I consider that to be different than the whole gay situation. Transgenders is, there are some people who are transgender, but it's nowhere near the numbers that we're seeing represented. And now, it's become a fad. It, all these young people are jumping on this fad because it's getting them the attention that they want. Young people, they, they like attention or whatever. So it's hard to even understand how many of these people who are saying they're transgender are actually suffering from gender dysphoria versus just saying they're transgender. So it, it's a lot of confusion going on, but I do a hundred percent agree that if you introduce certain lifestyles to people and you make it normal, you're gonna have people who aren't necessarily those types of people participating in that behavior. That's as far as I'll go with that.
You can, you can totally change the sexuality of a top populace of people just by simply how they are raised.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, I mean, why else would you be pissed off that drag queens are like reading books to your kids in school?
Yeah.
You know why that drag queen is there?
Yeah, that's right.
It's not, it's not to educate.
Turn your boy.
This motherfucker say, yeah, that's right. What the fuck?
Boy, turn your girl into a homosexual.
Wow.
Yeah, that doesn't make no sense. When I think of a drag queen, that's a performer that does sex, sex acts in front of adults. Why they have them in front of kids reading and have parents there ushering their kids in there to be, to see this garbage?
They're trying to normalize it. They're trying to normalize it. Bro, I, I wouldn't let a dude come to my house in booty shorts. Like, if I have kids, you, you're not, you're not about to be around my kids in booty shorts. And you could be a heterosexual dude, you can be married, you can like literally be dating multiple women. You're not finna be around my kids in booty shorts. I'm just not finna allow that. Now, you wanna take it a next step and start doing all kind of sexualized dancing and stuff like that sort, like, they're trying to normalize that behavior. See, as liberals, you have to start to realize there's a difference. It's one thing to say a person hates somebody because of who they are. It's another thing to say these people don't want that type of behavior around their children. And I, I guarantee you, most conservatives would agree, they don't want a guy who's heterosexual doing certain behaviors in front of their children. It doesn't, it has nothing to do with that person being dragged. It has nothing to do with that person being trans. I think they will equally apply that across the board, no matter what the sex of that person was or what, what their sexual preferences were. And we gotta be able, we have to learn in society to diff, like, to see the difference between the two. And a lot of times, they just group everybody into that same thing, or if you don't accept this, then you must be X, Y, and Z. And that's no way to win an argument. That's no way to bring people over to your side. That's no way to even engage with other people. But I think we're past that point where people want to actually engage in good faith. It's about, I'm right, you're wrong, suck it up, or I'll call you names.
Do not understand that. That's why we gotta stop compromising with the LGBTQ because they take things way too far.
Yeah, you give Mitch, they take the whole damn football field. Yeah.
Thanks for the follow.
You give him a, you give him a vibrator, one little vibrator. They come in with a strap on, ready to fuck everybody. What?
He got, wow, bro. What's up? Thank you for the sub. It's show X, Y, and G. I'm saying that right. Welcome to the hobby lobby. We in the building.
You go too far with things, man. You go too far.
Now, but did y'all see how all the straight people?
Shut up, I'm talking.
Well, let me, me and Keith got.
But this dude look just alike. I know they twin, but damn, them boy look just alike. One of them got more gray in their beard than the other one do, but them boy look just alike.
One of those books, if we've read it, yeah, the one book they're talking about.
Yeah.
They're talking about, don't swallow cum, you can get a sickly transmitted disease.
And it encourage you.
You say, what's wrong with teaching uh, kids to be more tolerant of others? I don't think that's what's under dispute here. Like I said, you can teach people that there are people with different sexual or, or people who are different in the world and we should treat everybody the same. I don't think that's what's under dispute. I think what they're talking about is the fact that they're trying to introduce certain criteria into the school that's exposing children to adult subject matter or inappropriate subject matter that these kids may not be fully um, developed enough to understand and to understand the implications of it. And that's what a lot of people are, I guess, arguing. You got welcome by Tyler. You officially part of the family.
They encouraging kids in that book, right? They encourage kids to have sex.
With adults.
Adults, gay, married adults.
Yeah, gay kids.
Gay kids having sex with gay adults that are married.
What's the name of this book? I, I have to look this up, cause like, I, I don't wanna speak on something if I haven't actually seen the book myself. Um, but if what they're saying is true, yeah, bro, I, I gotta say, and I, I mean this, God help us all. God help us all.
At least it's telling them how to get sexually transmitted disease. They told them, don't, don't swallow cum. At least it did that in there, you know?
It's common sense.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Alright, now I'm gonna show you.
You can get sexually transmitted disease by intercourse, but not by sucking and drinking?
Alright, this.
Of course.
He said this book is gay. That's the name of the book. Uh, I, I'mma look that up. Uh, I see um, exactly what they say.
Goes hand in hand. You'd be surprised the, many people don't know that. Anyway, I'm gonna show you the, okay, the gay side. Watch how illogical.
Yeah.
Irrational.
Everything is about you wanna ban me. You hate gays.
And they don't even address the school board. They're turning and addressing the crowd.
Yeah, calling people bigots and.
Yeah.
And their arguments literally are so gay.
Check it out.
A lot of innocent, young queer kids, they have made them terrified. And I come to you today as a mother, as a member of this community.
Man, I've been on a little vacation, man, vacation, man. I be missing it, man, but I looked the book up. I'mma figure it out once we finish with this video. See what's what.
As a wife, a mother, a queer mother, and as a woman.
Oh my gosh.
Who always.
They always start off with all these fucking platitudes. As a black woman, as a queer mother, as a, none of them people that got up there said, as a Muslim, as a white, straight heterosexual, nobody has to give these platitudes. Nobody has to make these proclamations before they give a statement, because you know what? Facts and truth don't give a damn about how you represent yourself or how you maneuver through the world. Facts and truth matter about the argument. It's about the argument, but if you can give all of this nonsense before you make a statement, that doesn't validate your argument anymore unless. But they believe that because in society, they've been taught that only you who's going through a certain experience can understand something and really be able to weigh in on the subject properly. That's BS. And I'm sad, I'm sad to say it, but people gotta stop buying into it. Just stop buying into it. And that'll end.
Always has to fight for their right to exist as a black woman who always has to fight for their right to exist.
Bro, wouldn't a black woman ever have to fight for their right to exist? When? See, this whole idea of the right to exist, like, no, people know you exist. People know you exist. Now, you can argue that people mistreated you because you exist. You can argue that people don't like you because you exist, but to say, to exist, to fight to exist? Come on, man. Really? And it's just like, you're not even making an argument here. You're just, you're just throwing out a bunch of talking points.
Exist as a black woman who always has to fight for their right to exist. As a queer person who has always had to fight for their.
This is identity politics one on one.
Their right to.
Get you some identity, get as many of them as you possibly can, because it will help you in the argument.
Exist. I am sick and tired of people telling me to go off and be whatever I am somewhere else. I am not going anywhere. I am sick of the only books that my son can read are about slavery and lynching, things that I find disgusting.
Well, just buy your son some books. Just buy your son some books. Is it illegal to buy your kid books? You wanna go buy this gay book and give it to your son, fucking do it. By all means, go do it. I mean, it's that simple. They're not passing out Korans in the, in, in the school. I'm pretty sure that Muslim guy probably has to buy his son a Koran, cause that's the, the book he wants his son to read and learn about. They're doing it. We're talking about math, science, history. These are things that we should be taught in school. And I would say the same thing about religion. Like, if you wanna teach your child to be a Christian or whatever, if you wanna buy them a Bible, I expect you to do it. I don't expect the school to do it. It's the same thing. What do you mean? What are you talking about, lady?
Can read are about slavery and lynching, things that I find disgusting. Those are things that I hate.
I thought black people was all about this whole, we need to teach more history and we need to like expose people to the reality of slavery and stuff like that, even though, I mean, we've been teaching about that forever, but she like, she's making an argument that she doesn't want her kid to learn about slavery and to learn about, you know, the oppression that black people went through throughout history. I, I'm so confused here.
I find unacceptable. But we are always reading about those things. We never get to read about love, kindness. If it bleeds, it leads. Anything that gets shot, anybody time, somebody gets in a car accident on beach daily or gully, it's the first thing on the news. If a lesbian couple gets married down the street, you never hear about it. Quiet, it is much.
Should we hear about it? I got married. I didn't make a public broadcast to everybody that should hear about it. It's like, your family and your friends and the people kept, like, you should attend your wedding. That's the end of that. What, what are you expecting? Like, what are you looking for? Bro, there are gay people who get married. If they celebrities, you won't hear about it. Like, I, I, what, I don't even understand what she's arguing at this point.
Please address the, the board. And please be respectful of the speaker.
Books are media.
Everybody has a right to speak, but not everybody's voice is as reasonable or as uh, it makes as sense as everybody else. So, you know, everybody has a right to speak, but I'mma say, not everybody's voice is equal, depending on how you using your voice.
Quiet. They're claiming my time. I want five seconds back.
Please continue. Please continue now.
I will not be shouted out.
Hey, it's like a, it's like a Maury TV show right now, bro.
On a faith other than mine.
Hey, um, did y'all notice that she's gay and guess what her kids are? She's gay raising gay kids.
Yeah, like.
She's taught her kids to be gay. Yeah.
Man, them kids probably don't, it probably ain't even old enough to be really knowing anything at this point, like, man, bro, parents be putting so much shit on their kids, man.
And her whole, her whole argument was stupid. She's, while we reading about kids being, I mean, people being lynched and.
Yeah, slavery and all of that.
You're confusing history with sexual, sexualizing kids.
Yeah.
One thing, for one reason, the reason why we study history is so we won't repeat it again.
Yeah.
That's why we study history. You need to learn about the atrocities that happened to everybody.
Now, surely you're a left-wing black Democrat. I'm sure you don't wanna do away with black history, man, do you?
I know, right? I'm like, what the fuck is she saying? Like, is she really losing her mind here? What are you arguing right now? It's like, you ain't even, you ain't even in, in step with the people who's supposed to be on your side. Alright.
You stupid bitch.
Alright, I wouldn't go that far. I wouldn't call her that, but like, to each his own, but I don't call women bees. I just don't. I don't care if we disagree or not, or anything of that sort. I don't call women bees because, like it or not, whether I disagree with you or, or whatever the fact, at least I have to, you know, represent myself a certain way and encourage other people to do the same. I would never went that far, right? But these guys way more successful than me, so, I mean, it's working for them. I'm just not gonna ever do it.
Y'all think your braids is too tight, if that hair is even yours?
Yeah, she brings up stupid stuff like, if two lesbians get married down the street, y'all don't talk about it. It's cause nobody cares. Just like two straight people I never even heard of. I don't give a shit.
Yeah.
That's their business.
I agree with that. I really a hundred percent agree with that. I do not care.
Always come up with this argument, oh, my, my gay kid, they feel dehumanized.
They're terrified.
They're terrified. They're gonna be, they're gonna be harmed. That's all bullshit.
Yeah.
Because that's all they have. It's a scare tactic. I mean, that's all they have. They don't have actual logical arguments. Sexuality is taught.
Yeah.
Pete Buttigieg and his uh, husband.
Yeah.
Or wife, whatever.
That kid he adopted, that kid gonna be one of the gayest kids that ever walked the face of this planet. Guaranteed.
Alright, so, I mean, I just can't, I, I, I really can't get a hundred percent behind this whole idea that sexuality is taught. I mean, a lot of people do engage in certain sexual activity because of the people around them, raise them that way. So, in a sense, they're right, but in a sense, I, I don't think that's a hundred percent correct. Um, like I said, some people are just gay. Some people, like, you couldn't have taught me to be heterosexual. Like, I like women. I mean, you didn't have to teach me that. I liked women when I was in kindergarten. So like, I was looking at other little girls in kindergarten. I was attracted to them. So, it's like, I didn't need my mom and dad to tell me that. You know, it's just something that some people have. Like, like I say, most people are heterosexual.
He's gonna probably be transgender. Yeah, every time I see a gay couple adopt.
But it's a lot of these parents who are forcing their kids or making their kids wanna be these things, and that is a hundred percent true.
Kids.
Yeah.
They're always gay.
Yeah.
You know why? Yeah, you know why.
Nah, man, tell me.
Sexuality is taught.
I don't necessarily have anything against a book being gay in a school, but that book is, in nature, is pornographic and it's, it in, it encourages kids to have risky sex, sexual behavior.
Yeah, but okay, let's go to the next.
That's why I don't want the book in there.
Yeah, let's go to the next uh.
Yeah, I saw it. I'm about to look it up.
That book is not, I mean, I don't care if you have gay.
You gonna keep kicking that dead horse?
I'm just saying, I don't care if you have gay books, but that book is over the top gay. I mean, you just taking the door out and you slamming it down my mouth.
Oh, man.
Check out the next guy.
Metaphorically speaking.
Yeah. Hey, here's the next guy. It's a gay white dude, right?
Yeah, and I mean, with the, just look at him, put, pull him up, don't have him talking. Soon as you look at him, you know he's gay. Isn't it true, every gay person, I would say majority of gay people, would you, soon as you make eye contact, for some reason, something goes off in your head. Ding, 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 gay guy.
Why's his nipples hard?
I don't know why, cause you can tell, but I, I mean, put the camera back on me. Gay people exist. We need to treat gay people fairly.
Yeah.
Like human beings.
Equally.
They need to be treated equally.
Yeah.
Gay people, now this is for you. Y'all not gonna get preferential treatment.
Yeah, y'all already got drag queens in school reading to kids. You got boys going in girls bathrooms. You got boys competing against bo, girls and.
You got a black woman on the Supreme Court don't know, don't know what the hell a damn woman is.
I'm tired of compromising with you people. You people take things too far, you're too radical, and you're just too damn gay.
Next video.
This is not a debate about books. It's a debate about culture. And let's just admit that, because.
Be respectful and allow someone.
Who wanna ban books about gay people and come up and use words like pedophile to describe gay people.
I'm curious. I don't ever recall in elementary or middle school being books about heterosexuals. Like, I, I never got books about heterosexuals. I mean, the only thing I got was sex education, and sex education was about like how reproduction works. How do you, how like, how to use condoms and safe sex and stuff like that, right? Which I'm pretty sure should apply to gay sex, I guess. Um, uh, use a condom. Uh, STDs exist, but I was never given books in elementary or middle school about like heterosexual sex, you know?
Who use words like sexual perversion to describe gay people. You're not trying to ban a book. You're trying to ban gay people. That's what this is about.
Hey, whether you dislike this man or not, this man bold. Hey, that man got up there, he, hey, some people don't have the courage to get up there and say this, right? Say what you want about the man, at least he had the nerve to stand up and say what he believed, but I, I just think that he's wrong.
And it's obvious because the signs are there. Let's.
People love using the word obvious when things are definitely not obvious. I, 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 that's one of the most overused words these days. It's obvious, oh yeah, to the people who agree with you.
Talk about what this really is. You hate gay people and it's obvious. Cause look at how you behave when one gay person speaks. Look at how you act.
Oh, it's not about you being gay and speaking. It's about you accusing them or something. Of course, they're gonna disagree with you, right? Like, if somebody got up and started calling them a bunch of like pig effers or whatever, they're gonna get up and scream at you, cause they disagree with what you're saying, not because you're gay.
And your children are watching.
Mr. Stone, Mr. Stone, you need, you need to. You need to address the board. You need to address the board and not the audience.
Yes, well, I'd like to also say this. Characters in books deserve to be defended. Every kind of character, gay characters, black characters, every diverse kind of character that can exist in a book belongs in our libraries. And you know what? They belong for one very simple reason. Because literature reflects reality.
Address the board, please.
Literature.
This man's a preacher. This man came up down fire. This shit turning into a straight up Maury episode, boy. I can't believe this is going on right now. But this is just to go to show you the, the reflection of the war on culture right now. The culture war that we're facing right now. It's like, there is no compromise between these people. Um, there will not be a compromise to these people because, the gay guy was like, either you're gonna accept my way of being, or you are a horrible piece of crap. And these people are saying, I don't care about you, I care about what my, what my child is learning in school that I pay taxes for. And, the gay guy is never gonna accept that.
Reflects reality. There's people who do all kinds of things in books. They're villains. They shoot people, they hurt people, they do dastardly things. And we don't try to ban them from every book, and if the most wretched villain belongs.
This man practiced this speech. He practiced this shit a hundred percent. This motherfucker memorized this. This mother, this motherfucker was practicing this in the, in the mirror.
Longs on the page of a book, then so too does a young gay child, or a gay character who's just trying to survive.
And he's, he's.
Hey, man, look, I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't agree with everything that guy said, but the guy got balls. He's definitely the top and not the bottom. This guy has balls. I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. That man had, that man had a more effective speech than anybody that got up there. And I'm not saying I agree with him, but he practiced that shit.
His whole argument was just, yeah, he's comparing apples to oranges. Yeah. Nobody, I mean, Jesus. I mean, okay, so there's a book with, and.
But just to go to show you that, that, that gay guy was able to get up there and say that, just goes to show you, um, where we are in society because like, maybe thirty years or twenty years ago, he wouldn't have been able to get up and say all of that. So, there's been some progress in the fact that freedom of speech is now more accessible to people. But you can have freedom of speech and still be wrong about certain things. And we have to get out of this idea like, I don't think the war now is between gay people existing and people who hate gays. I think the war is now is, what's acceptable to teach children at school and what's not acceptable. I think that's what the argument is. And I think if we focused on that argument instead of, trying to accuse people or not wanting gay people to exist, or wanting gay people to disappear, and we just focus on the fact what's acceptable and what's not acceptable in a criteria school, we're getting much further. But, the moment you try to have that conversation, they're gonna instantly pull you into a position of being hateful and you're just not gonna get anywhere with that.
How you go with fiction? Go from fiction to sexualizing kids. That's what that book is all about. It's not, as none of, he's, he's talking about fictitious books, like villains and stuff. If those books can. Of course, you can have gay characters in books. That gay character shouldn't be in a book in a school teaching kids how to suck cock and have sex with adults.
That's exactly the point, alright.
Don't you get the difference?
They don't get the difference. They don't.
See, you over the top gay. You're irrational, over the top gay. You, just because you're gay, doesn't give you the right, or you shouldn't be inclined to in sexualize kids at that age in school, like that.
He's the type of gay where it, 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 it is who he is. He, being gay is not just a part of him. It's the whole of his being. You have these radical types who, being an atheist is a hundred percent who they are. Being gay is a hundred percent of who they are. Some people, being a Christian is a hundred percent of what they are. Being a conservative is a hundred percent what they are. Now, for most people, that's not true. But it's these radical people who have taken on this identity and it defines everything about them. And that's what I get from that guy who just spoke. He's, he's drinking so much of the Kool-Aid that he can't see past the whole gay conversation. Everything has to be seen through the layers of, you hate me as a gay person.
They're straight characters, but you know they're straight. I mean, it never goes there. And nobody calls, uh, gay people pedophiles unless you have sex with a kid. Then if the shoe fits, you know, work. I mean, there's gay people out there, there's good gay people. They don't sleep around and they're good.
I'm not saying being gay i- is progress. I'm saying that the right for people to be freely able to express themselves is progress. Because there was a time where if you lived a certain lifestyle, you could not say it. And I think it's progress that more and more people can express who they are and what they are. And you could disagree with them, but in America, you have the freedom of expression, the freedom of speech. And the more people who can freely speak about what they think, I think that's progress. You know? I don't agree with it. I don't agree with certain lifestyles. I don't agree with certain narratives that they're trying to push on the population, but, I want you to be able to say it so I can at least understand what your motives are and I can fight against it. You know what I'm saying? That, that, that's what I'm saying. You know what I mean?
And clean and wholesome. Now, some of you gay people are perverted. We might use that term with somebody who sleeps around, like Jeffrey Dahmer, he's perverted. I mean, you have all these people with multiple sex part, uh, partners, that's perversion. Yeah, well, it's, I mean, straight people do that too, but, Yeah. Like gay pa, gay people have these parties, they call them like, what do they call them? Cum parties?
I think that gay people have a lot more sexual encounters because, men tend to be more sexually explorative in general. So, of course, if you're gonna have two men, or a man who engages with other men, they're probably gonna want more. Women tend, on average, women tend to be very selective. At least, it used to be this way. Well, women used to be more selective on who they sleep with. And it's this popular saying that, uh, women say, uh, uh, women say, when it comes to sex, men say, uh, um, give me a place and women say, give me a reason or something of that sort.
What? I ain't never heard that one. Uh, just a bunch of cum party. Cut a party, is that?
Yeah, that's crazy.
A cum party? What is that? It's just do, it's, um, Well, you can't even say it on camera, man. Video gonna get demonetized. No, man, um, I think I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I mean, like, shut up, let me say something.
Man, I don't even know, he gotta go into this, man. You, you, you go, just, you don't even have to go into.
We have gay people that come to our shows, right? We've been a meet and greet line, and they'll say, you know, I'm one of the good gays. And they look, they look sane. They understand that you shouldn't push your sexual beliefs on other people's kids. They get all of that. And that's what these books are doing. Kids, I will, I'm willing to compromise. I ain't com, yeah, I ain't com, I'm done compromising with them people. These people got boys going to lo, girls locker rooms, dressing, got them competing. You can't compromise with them more. Cause the more you compromise, the farther left is the entire country gonna go. I'm just saying, screw those people. I'm just saying.
If you can't compromise anymore, then what's the alternative? I'm not, I'm not saying that, uh, I'm not, I'm not saying that, we should compromise. What I'm asking is, if compromising is not an option, what, what else is left? That's my question. You can't not say that you're done compromising. Okay, then you got to give me, okay, then what now? Give me a plan, what's the move forward? Is it use force? Like, I, I need to understand exactly what you mean. No more compromising means what? And it could mean that I'm just not allowing them to push this anymore, or I'm gonna stand up and fight. I just need to know what does not compromising look like.
Saying what? I'm saying if these books are in school, the only way you can access. Well, no, 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 no. No, with parental consent. No, man. Cause if your parents want you to be gay, let you be gay. No, man, I mean, them books ain't gonna be around my kids. Nah, them books do not belong in school, man. Because you let them put them books in there? Say you compromised, right? Say you comp.
Yeah, um, here's the thing though, right? It used to be like, gay people should get married, right? People say, okay, gay people should get married, let them get married. And then they said, okay, well, now we have trans people in the communities, that we should, you know, acknowledge that they exist and help them. And then it's now to the point where it's like, well, kids should be able to get transitions or whatever. And I was like, we should have books explaining certain gay stuff in, in school. Okay, where is the limiting principle? Where do we draw the line? Like, how far is too far? I just wanna know. I just, I, I really wanna know, like, I feel like, and one thing I always say about progressives is, you gotta be progressive. Progressives never just pack up and go home. Once they accomplish something, they move on to the next thing. And we don't know what that next thing will be. We never probably saw someone that's coming. So, you gotta realize what compromise does come, where some people have this, this hero complex to where they have to keep pushing the narrative further and further. And you don't know where that's gonna go. At some point, you have to cut out the faucet. And, so, I'm always, I've always been a person of compromise and saying, we have to be able to agree on something. But there are some people you just cannot agree with, and you have to be able to decide who those people are, and exclude them from the conversation and deal with those people you can. There are progressives, there are liberals out there that you can have a conversation with, and y'all can agree on certain things, and y'all can come to the table and try to compromise. But there are certain people that you know, if you give them an X, they'll take a mile. And you gotta be able, very, you gotta be very good at understanding the difference between the two.
Compromise. Yeah. You have to get a parental con, consent, right? Yeah. How you know the teacher gonna follow? Cause there's some crazy teachers in there. Oh, I won't let your parents know. Go to chapter twelve, that's my favorite. You can't compromise, cause a lot of these leftist, these batshit crazy teachers in schools, they don't even go abide by the rules. Yeah. You can't even, you can't even compromise with them. That's true. I would, I would be against these books if they were straight. I mean.
See, I, I agree. I would be against them if they were hetero, heterosexual as well. Are you asking me? I don't know. You're talking to Soldier for Christ. Uh, I'm willing to compromise on this, but the books behind the permi, uh, permission wall, if you want your kids to read it, sign it out for them. That's a compromise. See, that's, that's a perfectly reasonable compromise. If you want your children to have access to it, then they should have to get permission from their parents to sign a letter or whatever the case may be. And that child should be able to get access to it. You know, is that so?
It just, it's just inappropriate for straight and gay kids.
I think we had to sign a, uh, we had to sign a form to do sex education in school as well. So, like, there has to be a level of participation from the parents and permission, you know? Cause at the end of the day, you can't tell people how to raise their kids.
I mean, if this book, this is so straight and it was teaching, encouraging kids to have sex with married adults, that's inappropriate behavior. The, you know, things that should come across your kids in school. They should learn arithmetic, history. The morality police should be left up to your parents. Yeah. Just like that one intelligent black woman said at the very beginning of this video. Yeah. That's the, ain't no. She hit the nail on the head, didn't she? Yes, she did. She hit the nail on the head. Yeah. And y'all see, all the gay people when they come up, they didn't address the school board. Yeah. Cause they're emotional. They're addressing the crowd there. Yeah. Now, when I'm addressed to school board, they screaming and shouting with the Muslims. You ain't gonna win that war. You can win it when we, war. I mean, it's just, it's just unprofessional. You should put your arguments to the school board. Yeah. Not to the people. If all the other people, the straight people, the logical people, the rational people, they're just school board. Yeah. They screaming that down at the crowd. Yeah, that damn, that damn school board meeting, man, that shit was off the chain. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a damn good show. For more damn good shows, click one of the two videos right here.
Alright, so these guys are very good. Um, these guys are very good at, uh, entertaining and I guess, uh, getting their points across. I would say that their video probably, uh, went on a little longer than it needed to be, but that's what they do. I mean, they make jokes and, uh, they bring people to, they bring people to them due to their charisma. They definitely have a good niche and a good, um, a good presentation on camera or whatever the case may be. I didn't agree with everything they said, but I agree with most of it. So, uh, that's that. And you're not gonna agree on everything, but at least you can do is hear people out and see exactly what they're saying. So, uh, kudos to them boys for, uh, making that video. And kudos to those people who took the time to watch it and to hear out what they had to say, even if you disagree with them. Uh, so, that's my thoughts on that. This video is brought to you by Havi Lobby Apparel. Yeah, I said it, Havi Lobby Apparel. If you're looking to make a statement politically, or you're just looking to show your support for local independent American artists, and of course, looking to support the show at the same time, well, go over to havalobbyapparel.com right now and start shopping. You can click the link in the description below, or go to the link down at the bottom of the screen. Every time you shop, you support the show, but you also get to look fly at the same time. Whether you got pets, whether you got children, or you looking for something yourself. Havi Lobby Apparel has something for everybody. Now, let's get into the video. Uh, make sure y'all hit that like button if y'all don't hit the like button yet. Let's see, uh, let's see, it's the time of the comments. I, I got your, um, video, um, queued up, uh, Tanya. I'm about to get it queued up. So, oh no. Why y'all, are you like that? Yo, come on, man. Come on, like, y'all gonna have intelligent conversations even though y'all agree, uh, disagree? We are, uh, you resorting to the name, hold on now. What are y'all arguing about? Let me see what y'all arguing about. Second Amendment, real regulated militia is not individualized. Conservatives made it individualized. So, we talking about, uh, I have a duty by the Constitution to do so. You sitting here defending pedophiles. Alright. Uh, let me, let me find out what's going on with this video real quick that Tanya, um, sent me. Cause, uh, you know what I mean? Peaches and cream. Know what I mean? Peaches and cream. Alright, so, uh, let's see. Alright, when this came out, October fifteenth. Alright, so, let's go. We get this thing pulled up. Yeah, y'all hear Tanya? We bigger than that. Let's use word, our own grown-up words. You know what I mean? Alright, so this video is called Unreal Furious Mother Reads Passage From The Book Is, This Book Is Gay. Alright.
Just listen to this.
Before my two-minute starts, I wanna give any parent with a child in the chamber to remove them if they would choose to do so. Alrighty, this book is gay by Juno Dawson was found in a seventh grade classroom at Collins Wood Middle School. It was also on the ELA recommended reading list for seventh graders at J M Robinson. I'm going to read from chapter nine, the ins and outs of gay sex, starting at page two oh one, part one, boy on boy sex. Perhaps the most important skill you will master as a gay or bi man is a timeless classic, the hand. Good news is, you can practice it on yourself. The bad news is, each guy has become very used to his own way of getting himself.
They put this shit in a seventh grade class? Is this the shit that they teaching the kids? Is this the shit that they putting in class with seventh graders? Getting yourself off and, the way that they're, the way that they decided to frame the conversation is so disrespectful. It, the way they decided to write the book in itself is degenerate. And the fact that they just put it in the seventh grade classrooms, that, is that? And they wanna know why parents are upset.
The bad news is, each guy has become very used to his own way of getting himself. Learning how to find a partner's personal style can take ages, but it can be very rewarding when you do. A good is all about the wrist action.
I'm a grown ass man, and even I feel like this is inappropriate. Like, regardless of your position on sex, I think that how we talk about sex should be, in a way that promotes, that promotes healthy, healthy sexual interactions with people. And they're making it seem as if sex is just a thing about getting off. See, we in society believe, in today's society, that sex is all about pleasure. And yeah, sex can be pleasurable. But that's not the primary function of sex. And we have to understand that sex comes with a lot of consequences, and sex involves your emotional, attention, it involves your psychological, e- everything up here, the chemistry and all of that, and how it impacts people. That's a real thing. And we can't just bypass all of that and just talk about the, the, the pleasure aspect of it. So, they're teaching kids about the sexual acts, but they're not teaching the kids with all the baggage that comes with sex, that surrounds it. And this book is just making it seem as if it's something that's just for pleasure sake, period. And I think that's a big mistake, and also, this is just wildly fucking inappropriate.
But it can be very rewarding when you do. A good is all about the wrist action. Rub the of his back and forth with your hand. Try different speeds and pressures until he responds positively. A bad is grasping a and shaking it like a ketchup bottle. It's no wonder that.
I know I keep pausing it. I know I keep pausing it, but like, I can't accept that this is real. I can't accept that this book exists in the hands of a seventh grader. I can't. This has nothing to do about sex. It's how they're choosing to describe the sex in itself is horrible. What human being thought this was a good idea? And fuck that. We not even arguing with the person who made it. We arguing with society as a whole why this should not be acceptable. And there are people out there defending this book.
That ninety-two percent of CMS graduating seniors aren't college or career ready when you're instructing them on how to give blow and instead of teaching them how to add and subtract. Superintendent, you stated this book was quote, brought into the classroom by a teacher with no intent to allow students access. Any teacher that puts material like this on his or her bookshelf is either a bad teacher or a. Any teacher that puts material like this on his or her built shelf is either a bad teacher or a pedophile who grooms children.
Two minutes are up. Two minutes are up. Thank you. I'm not on the ballot November eighth, but.
All right, let me know what you think about this.
Boy. It's, it's, it's hard to have a nuanced position sometimes because while I'm, I'm, I'm in no way, shape or form trying to reach these people who support this. Those, those people sh, can't be reached. If you, if you made it this far into supporting that book or thinking that it's okay for that book to be in the hands of a seventh grader, you're out of reach, you're out of touch. But this is to reach those people who have the same labels or find themselves on the same side with the people who support this. And I'm asking them to reconsider, maybe think that it's time to outcast these people or to distance yourself from these people because they're not heading anywhere. They're, they're heading nowhere and they're heading nowhere pretty damn fast. So, uh, I can't believe that, that. I'm glad, kudos to the parents that standing up. Kudos to the parents who are deciding to say something. Kudos for all the people who are sharing the message and getting it out there that this type of stuff is happening. I don't know how wide, how widespread this phenomenon is, but more and more, we're seeing more videos show up with inappropriate behaviors, inappropriate conversations, inappropriate reading materials and stuff like that showing up at schools. And we have to know where to put this to an end because we can't allow this to keep spreading. Uh, thank you for sharing that, Tanya. Um, I'm appalled, um, but I'm gonna get to the comments. Uh, let's see. It's on the recommended reading list. Uh, I didn't blanket all gay people, but mostly gay people touching kids. I have two fifth graders and I left the room just now, laugh out loud, it's too much. I, 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 man. I be, I, I honestly try to avoid like these type of conversations because like, I be wanting to just focus on like certain like ideologies and, uh, I've never been one person like, I don't talk much about sex in general. But it's becoming very clear and apparent that there's, there's a lot of people interested in pushing sex in society as something to be like heralded or put at the forefront of our conversation. So I gotta touch on it. I feel like it's a responsibility for me to address certain things at certain times. So, uh, this is, this is definitely out of line and, uh, somebody should have to answer for that. This is real, that's on the list of the books they are asking removed and it should be removed. Um, I don't know if they have a, um, I don't know if they have a petition or something going on that people can sign, but I'd definitely be willing to look it up and, and, and try to get a part of that. Uh, uh, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna put me through the next one? Time where you hit a next one? Uh, uh, let me see something. Uh. Cause, uh, I don't know, it was hard for me to sit through that one. Let's see. Oh, okay. Let's see. Uh, I got you, Tanya. I didn't know you sent two, so let me, uh, get it up here. Get it.
There, there is something very concerning that I think just speaks to the whole disorder that's going on in this board. And I'm going to read a passage of the book that's floating around in your school.
I don't see what talk, all right. Gay dude about that action, gay dude like, is that funny to you? So they can't even listen to it, but yet kids are supposed to read this. And this guy is apparently a member of the LGBTQ community and he, he's against it. At least that's what I'm getting from this, what I've seen so far. And I think that while this is hurting children, it's also hurting people in the LGBTQ community who don't wanna be known for this and who don't want to, it casts them in a bad light as well. So they, they don't, a lot of these guys or women don't support this either because they know it's put a spotlight on them and makes them a target. So it, it's bad all the way around, but the radicals, they don't care anything about that.
Why?
Our kids are reading this.
Okay, so he can't read it in there, but kids are reading this, what the fuck?
That's the problem is.
I don't want, you don't just want the book removed, you want whoever put that book in there removed. You want anybody associated with getting that book in there and approved or whatever the case may be, they should be fired. They should not be able to work with kids, period.
We don't. I don't, I just.
All right, so that dude was on the LGBTQ community and he didn't even, he, he wasn't vibing with it at all. You know what I mean? So like, um, I, like I said, I don't even think this is a left versus right issue. I think this is more of reasonable people versus unreasonable people issue. And there's a lot of unreasonable people out there and we just have to show them that the reasonable people exist. So a lot of people are afraid to step up because they think they'll be demonized or they'll lose their job or whatever the case may be. But, um, all it takes for evil to prevail is for good men to do nothing.